Uh, it's going pretty good. Let's see. Pass that down. I missed one. Okay, well.
One for babies?
One for who? Well, I thought I had four of them, but I mean, I didn't. Anyway, it looks kinda ugly, but it's not as ugly as it looks. Actually, it is kinda ugly looking, but it's all good. Oh, just have it pass it down, pass it down.
I got the jet for you, thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay, oh, there we go. We're all good. Uh-huh, if you flip to the second half, second page, we'll see how much the county is getting. The very top. To have good degrees, we're dispersing it today.
Do you do you owe that since then?
Yeah. We're gonna disperse these out today.
That's our first round of the test.
First installment, yeah.
Is that the max, is that what we're getting early? Everyone's been paying, that's what we're getting early more?
No, there'll be more. Now, this is just, I took the cutoff date from, until September the thirteenth. So, this is just strictly current taxes, this does not include mobile home or anything after the, that's been paid the thirteenth, so we'll still get more. I don't know how much more, but we'll stick with what we want. Well, the county general looks a little low at twenty-three six, but we'll pay that on today.
Get some deals paid, Joe.
We will be getting a bunch of this paid.
Good. Good deal, good job. Is that what it's screwed up?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, our county has the fire department call me and ask me about it, and Jocka McPhee Grove called and asked me about it yesterday, right? And they were gonna get their money.
Our Q A W is gonna be here today. You had any issues with your air, everything seems to be fine, or?
Oh, no, our air seems to be good.
No issues, okay.
Sometimes I'm like, Liz, where'd you get it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, can you, is the thermostat work where if you wanna turn it up?
Yes, because one day, uh, one of our people turned on the heat, I'm like, what? What's that heat on here? Yeah.
But if the thermostat works, you, your air ain't so good, I just want that.
Yeah, as far as we know, yeah.
Okay.
It's actually nice, we just need some light in there now.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get Tim down there soon as we can to fix those ceiling tiles and make it better for you.
Yeah, but he's working pretty hard.
Yeah, he is.
Pretty hard, yeah.
What door was that?
It's under there now. It was a critter.
I need to have some spray. Looked, didn't, looked like a good man.
Didn't. So, we're just busy doing tax, uh, dispersments and making sure everything is ready for that, you know.
When's the next installment due date?
Uh, mobile home is due the twenty-sixth, and then October seventeenth.
Okay. September twenty-sixth, mobile home, residential.
October seventeenth, mhm. Yep.
Is you gonna try to have the tax sale this year before the end of the year?
Oh dang it, I forgot that paper. Yes, tax sale is December the twentieth.
December the twentieth.
Mhm. I do have a paper that, uh, has to be notarized from, uh, the trustees, so that, you know, they can do that automated. And I forgot it.
Still doing it the way that it's set up where it goes up and they have to push it? It works it pretty well?
There's like a two hundred and fifty dollar setup fee and so much parts per parcel, but, uh, yeah. Otherwise, it's all good. Yep, trying to get money for the county.
We appreciate that. Yep, yep.
That's how it is.
I like it.
I don't have anything else unless Gerald did this.
No? Good job.
We'll get this dispersment done, I'm gonna try to get.
Everything?
Yes, we should be able to, without a doubt. Everything should be caught up and paid back and still have a little extra left.
Appreciate it, Julie.
See you guys later.
I'll see you, find a little extra.
Fourteen thousand.
Does it?
It's higher this time, this week compared to what it has been. It's fourteen thousand this week, but I am waiting to get the detailed listing before I release anything.
Be nice to find an extra thirty out of that.
Yeah, cushion.
Kinda cushion it back.
Yeah.
Plan for the future.
Yeah. So, we'll see what happens.
You're the boss.
How's it all going good?
Yeah.
You know that's a difference.
Can't really think of any of that. But, hold on. He's milling this morning from town. Me and Bernie Simon, we've seen that a lot. I've been a whole lot.
They just did twelve street, all the way through.
Well, they're doing some patching. I'm not really sure, I haven't been over there to look. They said they were doing some patching first, and then they're gonna pay it all, you know, so. I'm not really sure what they're milling. They're milling patches or if they're milling the whole thing.
Where's Ilyia?
Conference, she's in the conference. She'll be there Thursday.
Okay.
Real chipping that. Uh, they were up, like on Midway and Orchard and all that yesterday afternoon, so I'm sure they're in that vicinity. Trying to act this way. And we have a few more loads to do, so.
Another eight weeks?
Another three, four weeks, yeah, no. Should be done within a week.
Yeah.
I have a bid opening, I think, Thursday for the Mount Sterling Road box coat projects. Guys know about that next week. Nobody else too interesting, hasn't it?
I don't think I have anything.
Don't have anything.
Gerald?
No. Glad to hear that, Archie. Glad to hear that, Archie.
Yes, sir. A good week.
See y'all later. Please, Joe.
He owed me seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
Really?
Okay. I didn't know it was like eight bucks, and so I stuck like six dollars. Well, then, I ran out to my car, getting more change. I left one quarter from having the eight dollars, ran back out, and it just cleared out.
Wait, too long, you got fifteen seconds?
I couldn't, so they don't like refund your money?
No, but I do owe you money then, now I think it times out.
And they just won't give you your money?
I guess, I don't know, I heard anybody say anything about that.
After this one quarter, um, I went back to put, and it was already timed out.
Now you owe me a quarter.
Okay.
Man.
Go more short.
I like the check now.
Hey, did you get ahold of D and D?
Did you get that on camera?
I should be, 'cause I'm like going.
You talking about the plumbers?
That pool.
Oh, but the pool, yes, I did, but I ended up purchasing one before they got with me.
Okay.
Yeah, I went ahead and got, there was another company that I told you about one.
Okay, well.
I'm just waiting on it being delivered, I hadn't got it yet, I ordered one. Thank you.
Oh, no problem. That's why I ordered, actually ordered mine online, the book cover.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Twenty-eight hundred bucks, is that about right?
About right, yeah, it was, well, just, yeah, that's almost exactly right, a little under three pounds.
That make you wanna puke?
Yeah.
Now, is that one that you can walk on?
No.
Okay, how much are them?
I don't know.
Probably seven.
I don't know, I mean, what's that option?
There's some that retract.
Yeah.
And those are, yeah, those are white. Okay, guys, we'll have good ones.
Sheriff, how are you?
All right. Are you wearing a bat mask?
No, it's a sweatshirt, brother.
Kind of like a bat mask.
I don't come in here and call you names. Turn that camera off, we might. Least it's not a Cubs shirt. Go Cubs! How about your Cubs, they didn't do it, did they? The whole is over. The whole is over.
Goodly.
I said, one of her, is it, one of her rolled a wrinkle, or sprained one down there.
Yeah.
Rizzo did it, or Bryant did it, or that.
They're just coming up with excuses nowadays.
Excuse.
First time getting swept at home since nineteen twenty-one, you gotta roll something.
I've been swept before, it's not.
Just not by the Cubs, our Cardinals, it's four games, it's just.
As long as you gotta make it interesting at the end of the season.
They've made it interesting.
If it's gonna be great.
Yeah, they've already got their golfing plans booked, I heard.
Always next year.
Cubs favorite saying, isn't it?
It gets the most pressing, uh, bills here is the NAP oil for, uh, drug money. And then, uh, Trump's drugs. And then there's, uh, U S dues. And then at the end of it is the, uh, Trump's water and light and whatever you call them. If they ever want to turn it back around, it's gonna go. Cubs, go ahead, we got a generator.
Which one was that one?
Nine ninety-six, thirty-six.
Those are the last two there. I will say that November has been shrinking.
Yeah, and she did say they're gonna knock out a bunch of bills this week.
They should have stuff coming over right next week. Money from the court, I should be coming over next week too, to the first of the month.
Okay, but she did say today that they're gonna try to get a lot of.
Yeah, with the reimbursement, she should, the dispersment for the taxes, she said she's gonna try to knock out everything. And get like completely caught up.
We ain't ready to take that card off, but. If we can knock out, that'd be great.
How's your vehicles and everything?
Uh, not too bad, we got, uh, one we kept having problems with, it had the, uh, new engine cut in it, that was one T. It continues to have, uh, oil leaks, oil problems.
Is he driving it?
Yeah, we're taking it back out to Windwoods, um, they can't find oil leaks. However, um, we had the second opinion looked at it, and it, uh, definitely a valve cover gasket. It's gonna have to be fixed, we've taken it after three times. And, uh, they can't find anything wrong with it, but we've done what's wrong with it.
Did you curb look at it?
Yeah. And then there was, uh, same car had a fuel pump issue, it was, we had worked on out there some wiring stuff that had burned up. All the wiring burned up in it, and they fixed it, and then we just, yesterday, found, uh, found a recall, so we're doing reimbursement on them.
How many miles are they?
Uh, one-on-one.
Want to sell it?
Did.
You don't think so?
We'll get that fixed. If, I actually put, uh, it needed new tires, and I made the executive decision to steal the wheels and tires off the end of the vehicle.
That'd be a good idea, yeah.
It's already done. They're gonna, you know, they're gonna.
Might as well, since the thing's only worth so much. Regardless if it has tires or not.
Yeah, we put those on it, we'll, we'll, tires on it, so, I mean, it's gonna be cut out anyway.
Good, good call there, Chad.
Yes, yeah, yeah, made that call. Kind of easy decision.
I just think they keep doing that though, okay.
How's, uh, uh, pretty full over there, I'd say, forties?
Yeah, we got down into the thirties, uh, last week with some people getting out and stuff, but it's, you know. Things fluctuate up and down as we go. Uh, we're in talks with, uh, got a couple companies right now that we're in talks with. I got another one coming, two, two companies we're, we're talking with about doing a kiosk in the lobby. And basically, the kiosk would be for bonding and, uh, commissary. Right now, the way bonding is, you come in, one bonds a lot out, correctional officer come out, take the money, bring person out, go through the process. Commissary, the, you know, we purchase all the commissary items, they make out a grocery list, basically, pay the money for it, and then it gets hand-delivered to each cell. Whatever it is, so you basically, correctional officer tied up, small portion of the week, basically doing a grocery list for commissary. Well, those two companies offer a kiosk, and basically with the kiosk for commissary, what it is, is people can come in and automatically put, uh, credit card or, uh, money into the kiosk, into the person's account. That person then can actually go and make a list of what they want to purchase, and then send it in, and this company will deliver box what the person orders. And then we get, we, it costs us no money upfront, no money whatsoever, no monthly fee, and then we get a, uh, basically a fee on top of every purchase. So, we're technically only making money off of it without spending any money.
Right.
And then it takes away the, um, correctional officer having to basically be a grocery shopper, um, all week, and then the same is for bonding. Person comes in, instead of going in the back and having to go through the process like they do now, the person can put the money right into the machine right there. Bond person out, get a receipt, hand a receipt to the correctional officer, and he goes back and gets them, puts a quick bond out, and they're gone. So, it'll take away from a correctional officer having to move people and spend a lot of time doing grocery shopping and bonding right there, and on top of it, we get a fee for it.
Yeah, where would you put it, have it in there?
Been a lobby.
Just out there in line?
Yeah, it kinda looks like a small ATM machine.
Yeah. So, have you checked any other facilities there, using it, they seem happy with it?
Lot of places are using it, yeah.
That's good, better technology.
Better technology, and say again, it takes away from correctional officers having to do, maybe setting other jobs.
Yeah.
You know, and do that, so now they can concentrate on what they're actually supposed to be doing, so, you know, commissary and all that, and, uh, same for, you know, someone just wanting to put money on somebody's books. They can walk in, do it, or they can do it online, you know, automatically goes in there.
So, does this company come in every so often to, to deposit cash into it as well?
Mhm.
So, they come in every so often, I guess, and take that money out, we're not responsible to take it out or?
We're not responsible, only thing we'll be responsible for is picking up the check that they send us.
Okay, that's good.
Again, it's not gonna cost us one dime whatsoever.
So, they like ship the items or the?
Yeah, they do it once a week or twice a week, I don't know what the exact schedules will be, but a person basically sends in their order, and if they've got the money in their account, then it comes off their account, it gets boxed up with their name on it. U S Fed next will stop by, drop it off, and all the correctional officer responsible will do is pick it up and take it to the person.
Will the, will the correctional officer actually pick it up, open it up, and spot check it for?
No, the company, the company guarantees that, that they've checked for nothing but that, and then it'll go straight to them. I mean, if it starts to be a problem, then we'll change the procedures, but, um, that's what, you know, these companies, what they do for jail security and stuff like that.
It's a pretty neat business concept, I think.
Yes, and again, it kinda sold me on, well, it doesn't cost anything.
Where were we at on this, why didn't we, you know?
Then, then we make money on it, you know, every month we make. Right now, we make money on the commissary as it is, uh, a little bit over the top, you know, from what we sell, but that, that's what pays for the TVs and, you know, cable and stuff that we're responsible for having back there, so, that's actually been paying for itself, this here should, you know, we'll still make that money, and which I think will be a little bit more. And basically, it just puts itself.
But the main thing is, it just frees up your staff from doing those.
Yes.
Little things.
City judge. Instead of having to come out, take the money, count it, or get the card, run it for the person, um, do that, then bring the person out to do it. All they have to do is hand them a receipt. If the receipt says paid, the person, then makes a name on it, go back there and get released. And it actually, you know, if someone has, let's say they had a hundred dollars on their, uh, commissary account, and they come in and they get bonded out by somebody right there. It automatically recognizes the person has a hundred dollars, and what it does is it cuts them, uh, the money that they have in their account right there. Before, we would have to go in and write them a check, give them a check for what they have, and so basically, the COs would have to know, be an accountant, but a banker.
Yeah.
And a grocery shopper on top of that.
Yeah.
And then this will eliminate all those.
Okay.
Pretty good concept.
Yeah.
They're offering also have these video, video phone calls and stuff, but we're not looking into that right now for security purposes.
Yeah.
Not, not real sold on that item just yet.
All right. Thank you for updating us on that, appreciate it. Gerald, you got any?
Yeah. Chad, did you ever get someone playing the top of the double boat there?
The Surf Pro was here the other day, or, yeah, the Surf Pro, sorry, sorry. Surf Pro was here the other day, and it probably getting us a quote, it'd be premier company that we talked to out of Paducah, said that they, uh, want license to do that, since it was, they told us they were at first, but once they got to looking at it and realized that their hazmat stuff wouldn't cover it.
Yeah.
That, uh, Surf Pro said they would, uh, they were here, oh, I think it was either Wednesday or Thursday, and, um, went and took a look at it, and they're working up a job order right now.
Other folks probably seen the mess, like, oh, wait, no, no. We're not qualified, but.
Yeah, we can do that, now, so.
Maybe it's that histoplasmosis, huh?
Yeah, yeah, the Surf Pro said they had all the, uh, biohazard receipts and all that, so they'll be able to do it. They're gonna get us a quote first before they.
I'm sure that's a mess up there.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Virgo Rushton, they had a hole there in Rushton up in there. Ted, Ted said it looked pretty rough.
Yeah, but, yeah, so, as soon as I get me a, a quote, we'll, uh, I'll get it over here and talk to y'all in my condition to go, I mean.
It's gotta be done.
Yeah.
That's it, buddy.
All right. Where'd I get one from?
Yep, so, yeah. That's all I've got, you better share. Okay, um, so we don't have anything on design, um, we are, we did the mechanical punch list last month, we're scheduled to do the architectural punch list right after this meeting. Um, and then hopefully do the final walkthrough next month if everything, nothing's crazy. Um, wanted to give any concerns over to the owners that you guys have.
Gerald, I think, had mentioned something, you wanna talk about that door?
Yeah, I guess they know about it, the door on the east side of the floor.
Yeah.
There's a planning or something, or?
They do know about it.
I'm sure, yeah, 'cause they haven't got hardware on it or something.
Where do you foresee that getting done, or where they gonna look at it?
Um, I think they told me that they would have their, uh, kick plate is what was missing, they would have them by the end of this week, so they would probably come back next week and, and finish that up.
Is that about all you have left to do?
I think so, you know, I didn't get a chance to walk the job before I came in here, but it's my understanding that the, that the painting was all pretty well done except the gas line, they didn't get that, they're, they have to come back on the, on the gas line and up the outside of the building. So, I know that is something you'll want to throw in the punch.
Wouldn't have to rent a lift, but?
Yeah, and he had something, the local guy, his lift was out, and he's waiting on it to come back so he can get it for half a day and, and come do the work, it's just a, it's just a kind of coordination thing on his part for the lift to get to that. I think he got everything else done, the, the, uh, painting in the courtroom, and I've got a guy here cleaning and trying to tidy everything up, and we got the, uh, I didn't ever get our official mechanical punch list, but the items that I had down.
I'll forward you that, they forwarded it to me this morning, it's most updated.
Yeah, those items that I know about are done, if there's any others, we'll have to take care of those.
There wasn't a lot on that.
Balance report, I know the balancing has been done, I don't have the report yet, he's promised me that by the end of the week. Trying to remember. I think that takes care of everything, I think.
I haven't, uh, I just got your payout late yesterday, so I haven't had a chance to sign it, look over it or anything, I, I've planned on it, noticed that, um, our original contingency amount was a hundred thousand. Looks like we spent a little over fifty, um, total for change orders, so that leaves a little less than fifty that you guys had, we had that question last time on, uh, what you guys wanted to do, if you wanted to keep that and, uh, roll it over into, um, a service plan, or if you wanted that back, how you wanted to handle that, so.
Will you give us something in writing what the service plan will be? That way you could email it, I can let Jennifer, Gerald, everybody look at it.
I said last time I'd do it for the same as what this was, which is, uh, a little less than a thousand a month, I think it was eleven thousand for twelve months, and we come every, every month, and, but I'll, I'll put it in, you know, proposal.
Yeah, put us something in writing.
And, uh, you know, probably, I'll look at it, but if you really just, how much was left, do you remember?
I wanna say forty-nine thousand or something.
I'll look and see if I can just do five years for that, which would be even a little bit better deal.
Yeah, cause four years would be forty-eight thousand, so.
Yeah.
So, you're saying five years possibly would be sixty thousand, maybe forty?
Forty-four thousand, it was eleven thousand, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll look and see if I can do, I think I can probably do five years for that.
Unless y'all, there's other things y'all might want done, or?
Well, I'm, didn't we talk about having them stay and do something else that we need?
Yeah, I mean, they're already guaranteed for one year, right?
Yes.
Just for, right?
Now, the maintenance is not, you, it is, cause you bought it.
Right.
I mean, that, yes, one year, the guarantee is good for one year on everything. You have a longer guarantee on your compressors, um, but the maintenance, that's not part of the warranty, but in this particular case, you get one year because that was part of the original documents.
Right.
That we, that I put on the bill this time. So, that's what I'm talking about, buying additional. So that's what I'm talking about, buying additional. But we could look at warranty, you know, we could look at less years and extend the warranty. The la, you know, the labor warranty as well, whatever you-
What is it that you were talking about? Is that what you were talking about?
We're talking about, uh,
Getting Tim some help or something.
Yeah, okay.
You know, but-
That's what we're saying.
Have him give the price, so I'm doing something, you know, rather than-
Oh, doing some of the work that Tim?
Yeah. We're not so far behind. We'll never get anywhere this year, at the rate we're going.
Problem is that, I mean, if we didn't look for it, it's a little bit cheaper if we run it through you, I mean, everything's-
Yeah, and, and I mean, you're gonna go through them, you know, and they're gonna probably-
Yeah.
Kind of mark up every time.
Some kind of a, a plan, you know?
Yeah.
What we wanna do and everything, so they have costs too, so. I'll do anything, I'll figure anything you wanna do, including a credit, I mean, that's-
We're gonna make a list, we talked about earlier, about what needs to be done.
Okay.
And we'll get with you.
Okay.
We'll get with you, I guess.
You got any other concerns? I would really know anything, that's true. You got Jack Cameron down there, I mean, that's something we're gonna look into, right?
Yeah. I, I'd like to come up with a list, like two or three things. I mean, we'll have more than that, but, and get a price.
Okay.
You know, probably.
Do you know how much is? Uh, I think, uh, I think we're gonna end up with ninety thousand dollars.
Is that, is that gonna be the final? I'm just gonna run that by you, 'cause it's, I just-
I don't have a clue though, what we're getting from it.
No. No, it's nine.
Yeah.
Gotta put four hundred on top of that. That's just what's, that's-
Yeah.
For revenue.
Yeah.
It's actually, you have four hundred too, that is what's there. But that's only be, to be used to pay back, rather than be used to, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yes, you're right. This ninety-one thousand is last, uh, payout number seven you sent, you know, that you had signed off on, yeah? But I got it yesterday, it was ninety-one thousand, four eighty-five. Is that the last, is that a payment full?
No.
How much is remaining?
Um, three percent for sure.
Okay.
And I don't think I marked up, uh, I'm not sure if I marked balance complete, but a hundred percent or not, I don't remember.
I don't think it was, but I-
'Cause I know I didn't have the report, and I'm not even sure that I had been answered back from him whether he'd done it, had been here or not, so I don't remember if I marked it.
It says here, retainage, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. Does that sound right?
That would be, still, still due.
So that's a three percent? So, so we might have ninety-one thousand plus twenty-nine thousand, but-
I can look at it.
I was, we was just curious.
We were just curious.
Oh, you got it on your phone?
I was just looking at it on my phone here.
Um.
So that would be about a hundred and-
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty thousand. I knew we was getting awful close to the very end. But still don't know how much is left.
We were just trying to figure out how much we had left in our rental, but-
Leaves about that. It started out at, at right there, but they got there a hundred and twenty-nineish, that would be down there close to that number right there.
Okay, so, I think if I'm reading this right, um-
We know what we can spend to get this-
Does she have the, the, uh, change order on there for, uh, October to add in? I think you did.
Yeah, I see that change order, fifty-two thousand, three eighty-three. Know what you're talking about.
No, that's a total, I think. I'm about to tell phone with me.
Balance to finish including the containers, does that include?
That includes a hundred thousand. So I think it's, I think it's fifty.
Fifty-five?
Yeah.
After the ninety-one, correct?
Yeah. The, the, we asked for ninety-one, forty-five this time, and after that, you owe another fifty-five, three eighty-six, twenty-one, I believe.
That'd be, okay.
So you, yeah, about a hundred and fifty thousand.
I'll just have to print these out and look at it. It's hard for me to look at my phone.
Yeah, 'cause that takes out your hundred thousand.
You'll be getting, um, yeah, you'll, you'll take that complete hundred thousand off of that, and if you're talking about what you owe us, you'll, you'll owe us, the bill for ninety-one, forty-five, plus the hundred and fifty-five minus a hundred, which would be fifty-five thousand, three eighty-six.
So one forty-six roughly, so.
Yeah.
So. Thank you.
Okay, um, we don't have anything outstanding outside of the one last payout that we have to approve, so other than that, um, I did just keep our meeting for the next month. Like I said, we're planning on doing a final walkthrough if everything's done. Um, but is there any other concerns, questions, or comments on schedule or anything like that?
No.
Everything should be-
It'll be fine.
So our plan is to just take, um, a little while to walk through the building, make sure everything's good to go. If you guys think of something while we're walking, just let me know, point it out, just so I don't miss anything. I think we're pretty good shape.
Follow the, the final walkthroughs, October twenty-second.
Yeah, um, for now, unless something changes, unless there's something drastic that needs adjusted, that schedule can't be done within that point, but. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.